Hello, everyone, and good afternoon. Welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School Board meeting in this lovely, warm Castro Valley afternoon. We are calling to order the meeting. And seeing that we have no public comment, raise hands on items not on the closed session items. We will recess to close session and return to open session at 5:00 PM. Thank you so much. See you at 5:00. And we will get started momentarily as soon as all of our board members arrive. So thank you for joining us. We'll be starting in a few minutes. Thank you. Hello, everyone, and good evening. Welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School Board District Meeting. We are going to reconvene, reconvene to open session from closed session. And Shane, if you could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be greatly appreciated.
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shane. Report from closed session, the board did not take any action in closed session. For item 3D, approval of the agenda. And Parveen, the agenda is amended, correct?
Yes.
This is an action item?
I'll move approval of the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Are there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 3E, mission statement, Vice President Lee.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsible. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you, President or Vice President Lee. So for those of you who are on the line and want to cover public comment, the board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must raise your hand during the start of the agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button. And to comment by phone, raise your hand by pressing star nine. To request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item, you will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. Item four, Shane, what's going on?
There's a few exciting things going on at our school community. The High School, College, and Career Center recently put together a S-ville College Fair that was open to high school juniors and seniors. We had guest speakers from CSUs, UCs, and privates who all gave like an overview of their school and allowed students to ask questions. So that went really well. The high school is currently planning a spirit week for the last week of October, and leadership is working on coordinating those virtual activities that we can host. The social-emotional learning lessons are continuing at all grade levels during the allotted RTI and Trojan times. CBHS has fully launched its new online web store. We've completely revamped it and added new items. The elementary schools have uploaded poem and story readings onto their websites for students to access. The high school leadership environmental affair commissioners have partnered with CB San to work on addressing more environmental concerns at home to build that connection with students. And our high school wellness center is working with our leadership class and admin to expand their reach as it has been totally revamped this year.
Thank you, Shane. Now, I do want to take a moment. We have a board member who would like to take a point of privilege on an important topic, so Doc, over to you.
You. Thank you, Lavender. Monday was Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I wanted to take this point of privilege to honor that. We live and thrive on the occupied land of the Chocheno-speaking Alone people. Spanish colonizers changed their tribal lives forcefully paving the way for our culture today. Today, we live and educate our students on Alone land. We should not forget who came before us, and we should recognize the tragedy, and we should honor their memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Well, we are lucky to have another school presentation tonight, so item five, Parveen.
Yeah, I'm really excited to introduce Mr. Patrick Hansen Schmidt. And this is an exciting presentation because it is on the Castro Valley Virtual Academy for Elementary. And as always, I'm always impressed by what he has been able to accomplish and continues to. And I think he's worked two different jobs practically to get this done and is doing a fabulous job. So we're excited to hear from you.
Nice, thank you. Can you all hear me? Hear me okay? Nice, okay, so I'm going to share my screen because I've got a presentation as well. And you can see that, okay? Nice, okay, so first, hello. And thank you for the invitation to be able to talk tonight about the Castro Valley Virtual Pathway Elementary or the CVVPE. For those that are listening and don't know who I am, as Parveen said, I'm Pat Hansen Schmidt, the principal of Independent Elementary and also the CVVP coordinator. Today, I want to talk just like a brief overview of what the program is, dive a little bit deeper into what we're doing and where we're going from here. And then we've got a surprise little fun activity at the end for some of our students. So on a high level, the CVVPE is the instructional option that allows families, elementary families, to continue in distance learning throughout the entire school year. Even when the main option transitions into hybrid, these students are going to stay in distance learning until the end of the school year. We have representation from all nine elementary schools in the program with 27 teachers and 651 students. If the CVVPE were its own school, it would be tied for first place in terms of biggest school along with independent. But one of the unique things that sets us apart from the middle school and high school virtual programs is that we're not a separate entity. We can be thought of as a school within all of the other elementary schools. So what this means is that students retain their connection to their homeschool while they're in the CVVPE. So this little image is something I threw together for families to help clarify this distinction. So they still have access to their homeschool principal. A lot of the resources that homeschools provide along with extracurricular activities, their PTA and so forth. And they also have me, and I function primarily as an instructional coach, supporting both the instruction and the curriculum within the classroom and making sure that there's that consistency across the schools for all of the students in the program. So looking a little bit deeper into the day in the life of a CVP student and a teacher, this here is a schedule for one of our kindergarten classes. Just looking at it, you wouldn't really be able to tell that this is CVVPE versus the main option. You can see that the teachers are still teaching from eight o'clock until 11 o'clock live every day with their students. And they're dividing their kids up into small groups. Everybody is starting with this morning SEL time. And then you can see the cherry group, the peach group, circle group, square group, doing ELA and math with live instruction during the morning. When you look at the content, meaning the skills that we're teaching the kids and the tools that we're using to teach the kids those skills, you're also going to see a lot of similarities. CVVP's teachers and students have access to our typical CVUSD curriculum. All of them are using our social and emotional learning, the Anti-Defamation League's anti-bias curriculum. They're using our Teacher College Writers Workshop program, the new, new online program that we've got, and then they have access to Eureka, Zern, Raz Kids, and so forth for supplemental material. But the thing that sets the CVVPE apart from the main option is this Pathblazer program that we have access to, which the main option students and teachers don't have. This program is from edutiny as well, just like our secondary school program is. But this is specific for elementary school students. Teachers and students are using this specifically for math and reading, and it also has some science and social studies lessons as well. Students use this as asynchronous work or independent work, so they do this without the teacher being present. What it looks like when students log on and do a lesson, it starts with direct instruction. The virtual online teacher is doing some explicit skill instruction on the skill that the students are focused on during this period. It then moves into guided practice where the virtual teacher walks through practice problems with the student with a bunch of supports and reteaching options, just in case they're not quite getting it yet. Then moves into independent practice where we take away some of those supports, give the students a little bit more independence with that, but it still provides that immediate feedback to ensure that students are on the right track. And then it will end with some sort of assessment, a quiz and so forth, that will tell the teacher whether or not the student mastered that skill. If they didn't master it, they can come back in with that supplemental material. Like for math, they may supplement with their Eureka curriculum with the Zern, the NSYNC program that we have now. And just to make sure that the students are capturing all of the skills that we need them to learn in elementary school. Another neat thing about the program and something that parents and the older students use pretty frequently is this portfolio option. So in the program, when they log in, there's a little button on the side of the portfolio. They can click on that, and they can see the assignments that the teacher has assigned to them. You can see that this teacher has been working some pretty late hours assigning these activities at 9:30 at night. They can also see a history of the activities that they completed. And if there's a quiz or some sort of graded activity attached to it, you can see the score that the student receives along with that activity. The ones that are highlighted links means that you can actually click into that. And as a parent, see the quiz and see where the students missed some questions or what they got right and so forth. So next steps. The first thing, and we've been focused on, focused on this quite a bit in the first couple of weeks of school, is the ease of use of the Pathblazer program. Bits and pieces are a bit clunky. It's not necessarily the most user-friendly program that we've got. So we're spending a lot of time making sure that we can make it as easy to use as possible so that teachers are spending less time on the logistics of the program and more time with their students. We're also going to be talking about ways to make sure that we're incorporating more collaboration projects and so forth, opportunities for students to mingle and work with each other. And this is something that both programs are going to be focusing on quite a bit because of the distance learning situation, making sure that students are still able to interact with each other. And then of course, all of these and everything that we're doing is through a lens of equity, making sure that's all actually means all. And that all of our students are able to use the tools that we're providing them to be able to progress in their learning. We're going to be using abolitionist educational principles to evaluate the program and make sure that all students can access the program and are affirmed by the curriculum instruction that we've got going on. So now, whoops, I gotta click back on this. So like I mentioned at the beginning, the CVVPE is a school within all of the schools, so students still have, still are their traditional mascots. So like our Shaboo students are still the Tigers, the independent students are still the Eagles. But now that we're part of the CVVPE, we're the path blazing Tigers and we're the path blazing Eagles. And, and we know that a path blazer is somebody that creates a path for others to follow, meaning that they're a leader or somebody that looks up to. So students took that information, took their mascot and the path blazer idea and submitted entries to of drawing new mascots into this competition. Teachers and principals voted, and tonight we're gonna, we're gonna show, we're gonna show the winning entries to our mascot competition. Heads up that we're still working on Marshall's Path Blazing Mustang, so you won't see that tonight, but every other school you will see tonight. So first, Shaboo. We've got Caleb, a third grader, who submitted his Path Blazing Tiger. You can see the computers and the tech tools within the Stripes. My favorite is the Path Blazin' instead of Path Blazing. Congratulations, Caleb. Castro Valley, we've got Chloe in kindergarten. You can see the Path Blazing Bear has a mask on, has a mask for her friends, and also has a hands-free thermometer to make sure that everybody's healthy. At Independent, we've got Ray in second grade. You can see our Path Blazing Eagle has a lantern to light the way for everybody. Congratulations, Ray. From Jensen Ranch, we've got Neil with his Path Blazing Jaguar, ready for learning. Palomeres, we have Maya with the Path Blazing Hawk soaring to new heights. Congratulations, Maya. At Proctor, we've got Jacob in kindergarten with his Path Blazing Patriot. At Stanton, we've got Chloe in third grade, the Path Blazing Star leading all of her friends. And then at Van Nooy, we have the majestic Path Blazing Cougar by Gail in third grade. Nice job, Gail. So that's the CVVPE as it stands right now. And I'm looking forward to more opportunities to share what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some comments, so Joe?
Patrick, thank you very much for the presentation. I tell you, those mascots were quite a lift, a really positive thing for us. I did want to ask you one question, though, about you talked about the technology, and you used the technical term kind of clunky for the teachers sometimes. But out of the 651 students, just a total ballpark, I don't expect you to, you know, know this. How, how are the students doing in accessing the technology?
All students except for our TK students right now are using the Pathblazer program. Just like with the main option, we have some students that are finding engaging in distance learning a little bit difficult, but for the most part, they're all using the program really well.
Doc, and then I have a question too.
Thank you for that presentation. It was great, and I do love those mascots that you showed us. You talked a little bit about student interaction. Can you give us some examples of what that looks like or what that will look like?
Yeah, so the Pathblazer program focuses really specifically on targeted skills. So what we want to be doing then is creating like project-based learning opportunities. Now that we have our new Zoom for Education accounts, we could do some breakouts during our live sessions for more discussions around like a novel study or a book that the kids are reading. They could do science projects together where they come up with an idea, and I'll take little bits and pieces of it. Something like that.
So I have to ask Patrick, this is such a, a new thing for everyone, and everyone is experiencing it in different ways. If you could maybe give one or two themes of feedback from parents of positive things that they're saying and from kids, maybe teachers?
Yeah. Well, I think like one, one thing that I've been seeing, and I actually meant to mention this at the beginning, but I skipped all over it. I wanted to give a shout out to all of the families within the program because they have been really responsive and really engaging with it. I sent out a family survey probably mid-September to get some feedback about areas that they would like some support, and we had a huge, like massive number of responses, which has been really great. So everybody has been really engaged in making sure that this is successful. I think I'm trying to think of like specific themes, things that, I mean, like the thing that's going the well, the most well for me is the fact that kids are learning and progressing really well. Like one thing that all students did, no matter what the program is in elementary schools, everybody took or the running records assessment. So we can see at the beginning of the year and compare how students are doing in terms of their reading skill and their like there was no difference from what I could see between the CVVPE program and the main option. So learning is happening, which is awesome.
Great.
Yeah.
Monica?
So I was just curious, since everything's done virtually, is, is there time that the students get that they can socialize and get to know one another? Since they're not getting, you know, a traditional recess where they go out in the playground and?
So that's one thing that we're working on, trying to figure out ways to get students to be able to do that. I know at Independent, we've put together a parent directory to try to facilitate some of that social time between families. And then the morning SEL time every morning, and then there's a longer period on Fridays. That's a really great time to have like full-class discussions and share how things are going.
Great, thank you, Patrick. Gary, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, Patrick, thanks for this report because I think all of us really wondered how this program would work out. And it's a very big thing to put together in a relatively short period of time. So this is encouraging, that's for sure. And the other thing clearly is those mascots are just spectacular. That's, they're really, really wonderful. So thanks for showing those.
Yeah. And if I could, I also say this at the beginning too. The reason why this program is working and the reason why we're being successful right now is because of the teachers that we have in the program. So I wanted to give a shout out and an acknowledgement to all of the hard work and like the massive number of hours that they're putting into making sure that they and their students are successful. I wanted to make sure I did that tonight.
Thank you, Patrick. Parveen?
It's always hard to, you know, I wish I had, like, I could just videotape even 24 hours of what everybody in our district does to make things happen. You know, and that would now include the parents as well because they're having to do a lot more than they ever did before. But if you watch and see what our teachers have been able to do and have done, our administrators, there was a lot of work that went, I'm, I really honestly think before we got started, as we were setting it up, Patrick, Nia, Vivian, all of them, and Ed Services, and everybody else, HR, it was, everybody was working really hard to make this work because it wasn't like we had a whole year to plan. And so I want to thank you again, Patrick, for doing an amazing job. And sometimes, you know, you just know there's somebody who needs to take a hold of something and be the coach and be the instructional coach and lead it, and, and you've done a fabulous job. I, I know that I've said this before, but I want to say it again. I, in my meeting with other superintendents, Castro Valley Unified is the only district that actually has a virtual academy as we have set up, which makes it a lot better when at some point, whenever it is during the year that we go back to hybrid and whatever. We actually had parents who really asked for this and got what they needed. Again, you know, when other people go to hybrid, there's a lot of moving around that they have to do. The other thing I want to say is, again, I want to thank our teachers and, and everybody. When we were working on starting the academy, there was, there were two options. You could have a teacher from anywhere and put all of the kids in kindergarten in first grade and second grade together. But the demand and the really request and genuine request from parents were, I want to stay with my own school. I want to see if we can make it work so that they are with their teachers from their school. And that took a lot of work, and I want to thank Sherri Beetz for working really hard to make that happen. But we ended up with a lot of combinations because we wanted to make sure that the kids were actually with the teachers from their own classrooms. Again, you know, it's a give and take. But anyway, thank you so much for, for this work, and we're gonna hopefully, you know, in a few months, come and maybe do another update.
Yeah.
So that, that we can also kind of look at how else can we improve our programs? So thank you.
Yeah.
Shane?
Just echoing what Parveen said, I just wanted to say thank you so much for like working towards ensuring students socializing. I know a lot of students who I've reached out to had issues with worried about losing connection with their school, but the fact that you guys are really working towards that really sits well with me, so thank you so much.
Yes, Patrick, thank you for all of your hard work, and thank you to the, the parents, the teachers, and our students. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it. Moving on to our next agenda item, item six, California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association report. I am going for, to look for Robin, see if she's with us tonight? Yes. Good evening, Robin.
Good evening. I am here and happy to be so. As president of Chapter 52 of our CSA for Castro Valley, it's been an exciting year, and we're, we are in the midst of election season. Duh. I think everyone is somewhat aware of election season, but we have been active with phone banks, with access to information and distribution of information to both our members and our area of who is on the ballot for the folks that are near and dear to our hearts and our homes, such that all of our members got information about all of the candidates that are running for school board. And we also are joining in the fun. And we also are joining in the fun in that in the October meeting, which is coming up on Thursday and November meetings, we will be taking nominations and also preparing to vote for our chapter leadership to fill some gaps and to plan for the future. So definitely it is election season in Castro Valley. So I wish you well, enjoy the time and vote. It's important.
Thank you, Robin. I'm gonna put you back. See. Amy, could you remove, put Robin into the regular? Action, that would be wonderful. Thank you. And now Mark, I saw Mark. There you are, you're moving. Mark, welcome.
Hi, thank you. It's great news that our county is, is making progress against COVID-19. As an educator and parent, I want our children back to in-person instruction for all the same reasons that we all do. Though our members are working their hardest to make distance learning manageable for our students, it is a challenge and it illustrates how important our schools are for not only academics, but socialization and daycare. It also shows how amazing our staff is. I have read and heard some crazy things happening in other school districts. Our membership should be proud of the service they are providing to our students. Distance education has been difficult for our community and our whole country. And I am heartened again that our efforts of isolating ourselves is contributing to our numbers dropping. Tonight, Ms. Amadi will present the roadmap to reopening our schools. We have surveyed our membership and a majority of our educators have serious concerns about returning too quickly to in-person instruction. Even with the challenges of distance learning, going back too soon could jeopardize the progress we have made. In addition, for the sake of continuity, it would be far from ideal for our students to go to the hybrid model, then grind back to distance if we have cases of COVID at our schools. Not only academically, but, but emotionally. I hope the board shares our cautious approach and weighs the benefits of having the safety and continuity of distance learning versus a new model that may have unknown consequences. Let's open the elementary schools and see what happens approach is not the safest approach for our community. Again, this is not because we do not want to go back to in-person instruction. We want to go back when we have every safeguard possible for our students and staff. When we have an agreed upon schedule that will meet the needs of our community as best as any hybrid model can and is manageable and safe, then we'll be ready. Our membership is cognizant that distance learning is difficult for many families and our leadership team will continue to work with district management to reach these goals. Finally, this virus will be under control at some point, hopefully sooner rather than later. But we still will be faced with shortfalls in educational funding. CVGA has endorsed and encourages everyone to vote yes on Prop 15. CBUSD stands to gain $5 million more in funding each year if this passes. Our essential services, which we all know are more important than ever, now will also see an increase in funding if this were to pass. A group of CV teachers made a yes on 15 video that we hope circulates around the community. Thank you to those teachers who participated and also thank you to our community members who have posted it or liked it. There is misinformation coming from the opposition about this measure that we hope our community sees through. Scare tactics should not distract from voting in favor of more funding for our children and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And for summary, thank you. So we will move on to item seven, public comment for items not on the agenda. And I just want to be clear, for those of you who have raised hands, I'm only taking comments for items not on the agenda. So if you do start to stop once and then it's on the agenda, I'm going to have to stop you and have you wait. So if it's not on the agenda, please keep your hand raised and I will allow you to speak with a three-minute timeframe. So I'm going to go to Elizabeth and then Sarah Fetter. Elizabeth?
Hi, thank you. I just want to bring up a point. I'm a special education parent in the district. I am also battling cancer. My daughter will not be allowed to return to school, no matter what county and state provisions are made. And it's my hope that the school district is thinking of our community as the community at large, not just the safety of our teachers, which is absolutely paramount to me, not just the safety of our students, which is also paramount to me, but the safety of their family members and the community at large. We as a school district, all school districts frankly, have an opportunity to really, really improve the war on COVID by acting and thinking and believing and working as a part of the whole community. So when we are making decisions about pods, live instruction for distance learners who are struggling and our special education students are desperately struggling and I don't see that really being addressed, but that's another matter. I, I want, I want to believe that the school board is leading the district in the concept of the school district as an opportunity to fight this and that the COVID danger does not just apply to teachers and to students. There are families out there who are wildly impacted and very, very restricted. And it is my hope that my bringing this up makes the school board think about that extra level of care when we talk about returning. Again, I want all teachers to be safe, all students to be safe, all admin to be safe, all support staff, staff to be safe. And I will support measures that help that happen. And I think it's possible, very, very possible to work out a plan for the needs of all of our students and staff. But I want to be sure that the board understands that it isn't as cut and dried as teachers and students who need to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And though your item was on the agenda, I do want to remind folks that if your item is on the agenda, please lower your hand. So again, if your item is not on the agenda, so if it's about school opening, that is part later down. So we will not, this is only for items that are not on the agenda. So Sarah, if your item is not on the agenda, I'm going to allow you to speak.
Hello, my item is not on the agenda. Good evening. My name is Sarah Fetter and I am the parent of four children in Castro Valley Unified School District. I have attended most school board meetings over the past few years, hoping to gain insight into how special education is handled here. What I've learned is that special education is not a priority. This opinion is based on what I've heard stated at school board and regional policy board meetings, the lack of transparency and engagement with parents and the lack of action. In June, I asked the school board to look into wasteful legal spending in special education. Hundreds of thousands of dollars per year spent on fighting parents rather than collaborating with them. Hundreds of thousands of dollars per year spent on a law firm with questionable tactics, including generating unnecessary work to increase billable hours. Hundreds of thousands of dollars per year spent relying on the legal advice of an outside firm rather than ensuring that the special education department has the expertise internally to make sound decisions that are in the best interest of the student and district. In June, I also asked the school board to actively engage with special education families. I asked for the creation of a parent advisory committee to increase collaboration and understanding between the school board, administrators and parents. I asked that the special education department consult with parents in their planning of services during COVID-19, yet parents are still in the dark. There has been no effort from the special education department to engage with parents, get feedback and ensure that their students' needs are being met during this difficult time. This isn't new for families of students in special education. This is what we experience most of the time. It is not acceptable and it needs to change. Having lived in other districts and experienced what being an IEP team member as a parent is like elsewhere, I'm disappointed and shocked at the way parents are often treated here. After everything our family has been through and advocating for our children's needs in this district, I probably shouldn't have been surprised that my son's first grade teacher recently testified under oath that I stated in an IEP meeting that I wanted to get rid of him and that I didn't want him in our family anymore because I was advocating for him to get necessary services for his severe emotional disturbance. But I was shocked. I was hurt and deeply disturbed by her false claim. Equating seeking treatment with not wanting your child is a gross mischaracterization, one that highlights a serious lack of understanding of disabilities and mental health. All means all is a phrase that appears on all district communications and websites. Roughly 10% of the student population receives special education services. If inclusivity is truly something this district values, we have a long way to go when it comes to special education. What are the school board and district administration doing to ensure that all actually includes 100% of students and not just 90? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm going to put your phone on mute. And Maria, if you have a comment not on the agenda, I'm going to allow you to talk. Oh, okay. Great. Well, I will move us back to the agenda to item eight, the consent agenda. This is an action item.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, reports, discussions and action items. Item A, approve the personnel report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the personnel report as amended.
I'll second.
It moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. I'll move us on to item B, public hearing for the reappointment of Personnel Commissioner. So I will open the public hearing. So Tony Wilkerson raised her hand on this item. I will allow her to talk. Welcome, Tony. Let me if I could get you to unmute your line.
Are we ready?
We're ready, Tony.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I've spent many years on the person. Pardon me?
We don't need the timer for Tony's report.
Oh, well, I'm not doing the report at this point in time. I'm just speaking on behalf of Christopher Lowe as the Personnel Commissioner. And I'm, I'm delighted to see that the board, oh, that's okay. I just wanted to speak up for Chris Lowe as just an amazing Personnel Commissioner these years, his experience and, and everything. So I just wanted to just interject that thought and to congratulate the board for making the nomination for Chris to be reappointed as a Personnel Commissioner. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. I'm going to mute your line. And Amy, if you could remove Tony, that would be great. And Maria, you have a comment on the public hearing? Going to allow you to talk. Maria? And Sheila. All right. Since there are no other comments, I will close the public hearing. And I will move us on to item C, which is an action item to confirm the nomination of Mr. Christopher Lowe to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction for Appointment to the Personnel Commission.
I'll move that we confirm the nomination of Chris Lowe.
I'll second the nomination.
It's been moved and seconded. Is this an item Shane can vote on? Sheri? I don't know. We'll, we'll give you a preferential vote. This is a new one for us.
Yes.
Oh, it's not personnel, so.
Okay, just, you know, okay, great. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Thank you. I will move us on to our 2019, 2020 Annual Report of the Personnel Commission.
To present to you, we have Mr. Lowe. So we are going to share the screen and Mr. Lowe is going to present the Personnel Commission annual report.
All right, just want to make sure that you can hear me. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Sorry, we were all putting our thumbs up.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Amadi. Thank you for your nomination to meet for another term as a Personnel Commissioner. I really appreciate it. Next side, next slide, please. So it is very much a privilege to serve on the Personnel Commission with President or Chairperson Tony Wilkerson and Commissioner Terry Bailey. As a commission, we are dedicated and committed to these four oval and circles that you see here to select and retain classified employees based on their merit, other, in other words, their qualifications. Secondly, ensuring equal treatment for all classified employees and applicants for employment. Thirdly, protecting classified employees' rights pursuant to our rules and regulations, which were just revised a year before last. And fourth, being the board's partner and promoting a harmonious relationship with classified employees and CSEA. Next slide, please. All right, this collection of slides demonstrates the work of the Human Resources Department staff when it comes to recruitment and selection. And I would like to, to draw your attention to the total number of applicants. This year, it is less than prior than the prior three years. And this is partially due to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, in the upper right chart, you can see that the HR department has conducted nearly the same number of examinations as the year before. And the examinations administered in 2019 and 2020 also resulted in a total of 107 classified employees appointed, which is actually 12 more than the year prior. The district is committed to promoting its classified employees. And as you can see, this last year, 10 were successful in being appointed to higher levels of responsibility. Next slide, please.
Sorry, one second. I think the timer was going off. I'm so sorry about that. Let me restart this here.
No problem. All right, on this, on the prior slide, it demonstrated the work of the Human Resources Department staff when it comes to recruitment and selection, which the commission is extremely, extremely proud of. The Personnel Commission also approves job descriptions that are developed by the HR department to address emerging, emerging scopes of work that did not exist before. The Personnel Commission does not operate in a vacuum. It is an active partner to the board, CSEA, classified employees, parents and students. We strive to visit at least three sites per year, but as you can see, this year, we were cut short due to, due to the pandemic. Members of the Personnel Commission and the HR Department staff actively participate in regional and statewide Personnel Commission associations to continue to learn about the latest developments, developments in employment law relevant to the district as well as to present and share our own experiences, such as the lessons we learned and experienced as we revised our own Personnel Commission rules and regulations. We had the opportunity to present that topic at the State Personnel Commission. State Personnel Commission Association in San Francisco. And finally, we value, honor, and celebrate our classified employees when we participate in the activities that are listed in the lower left right-hand corner. And then, next slide, please. So in so at this point, that is our annual report. And I again want to thank you for your trust and nomination. It is my honor and privilege to hopefully continue as a member of the Personnel Commission for our district and to continue to work with Assistant Director Superintendent Sherry Beats, Director of Human Resources Dustin Gashrow, Classified Personnel Confidential Jennifer Tapia Smith, and the other HR Department Staff members, Karen Eisenberg, Suzanne Leonardo, and Erica Mendiola. And last but not least, you, the Board of Education, and also Superintendent Pramadi, Parvind Amati. So again, thank you for your attention during the presentation of the Personnel Commissioner's annual report for 2019 and 20. And I can entertain any questions that you have.
Chris, I just want to say, the work that you do is very important. And it's so great to have a body that looks at things to make sure that things are equitable outside of the board and outside of the district. It, it makes sure things are equitable. And I really appreciate your time and dedication, as well as the other people on the commission. So thank you. Joe?
Thank you. Chris, I wanted to congratulate you on your nomination and thank you very much for your service. I understand the complications of the merit system. And it makes it so much more difficult to be an employee in our district. But the work that you do makes it happen. And we have great employees as the result of it, you and the other commissioners' work. I just wanted to take one second to comment on the retirement video that you did last year. It was really a pleasure. We always look forward to the party that you give for the retirees and an opportunity to hear what they're doing in the, in their near future. But the video was a wonderful substitute for that. So thank you to the Personnel Commission for allowing us that opportunity to say goodbye to employees that have been with us a very long time.
Yes, that is definitely a very special time where we honor those that have continued to serve our district so well.
Carrie?
Well, congratulations, Chris. Thank you for all the hard work that you and your colleagues do there. I just want to make a point that it's my understanding that we're one of the few remaining merit districts in the state, I think. Is that correct?
No, there are actually a few in Alameda County, like Berkeley, there are a few Fremont. Yeah, but it's not that, to your point, it's not every district.
We're unusual in taking all what Joe just mentioned, the difficulty. But it, but it is a system that makes things fair and open. And I think that's really terrific. So thanks a lot, Chris. Thanks to Toni also.
You're welcome.
And Carrie.
Yes.
Toni does have her hand raised, so I'm going to allow her to speak. Hi, Toni. Are you with us, Toni? Maybe not. All right.
That's with a question about the number of merit districts. Actually, merit systems represent more than half of the classified employees because LA unified so big. But there are not as many districts that are merit districts. In Alameda County, we have Berkeley, San Lorenzo, Hayward, and Alameda County Office of Ed of our 15 districts. So that might be why Toni's raising her hand.
And Fremont.
Thank you. Well, thank you again, Chris. Thank you, Toni.
Thank you.
And we will move on to item E, Superintendent's Report and Discuss the Roadmap to Reopening and Safety Plan. Superintendent Amati.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna, I, let's see, let's have the presentation up first and then I will get started. Thank you, Amy. Uh, next slide. Um, I want to start by just sharing where we are in the county. We have now entered the orange tier, which again, I think to, um, you know, as CVTA President, Mr. Milatmich was mentioning, you know, being in orange doesn't just happen on its own. That means that everybody is being responsible. We're working really hard to get to this point because we're actually following rules. So I want to congratulate everybody and for their part in getting us here. Next. Just another look at what's happening, seven-day average positivity percentage for Alameda County. And then obviously, the average case per 100,000, which is 2.9 at this point. And remember, we started in 9.3. So, um, next slide. So how, I wanted to just kind of update you and the community on a couple of things that we've been doing to support our students. How are the, the support hubs going? And we have them, we opened in almost all of our schools. We have about, up to, we can have up to 14 students. Some of the hubs have, um, you know, maybe a lot less than that, but some have almost, are almost up to capacity. And we did invite 14 students at least at each one. But some families, obviously, you know, it's by choice. Not all students identified, obviously invited, participated. And they are going well. I have visited a few. And obviously, just want you to know, I do not go into the room because we have to be very careful about keeping the bubble a bubble. And the cohort. And so I want to thank our classified members who are there every day to support this, our administrators. And we are working really hard to see how we can move into the phase where we can have push-in services with our certificated, because that is something that is permitted in, um, in Alameda County. And it is very important to make sure that we support our students who have special needs. And we're extremely grateful to the adults who are overseeing the program. Specialists are allowed, like I said, and schools are allowed to have multiple hubs. So once we do a really good job with one hub, we want to make sure that we work out all the bugs and then that we already have. And we want to make sure that we have the staff needed to actually increase the number of hubs. We can have up to 25% of each school's population in hubs. But again, that would require sufficient staffing. Next. Um, I wanted to update on special education. We have some of our students who are in special education participating in some of the support hubs, which is why it would, it's really wonderful to have, um, you know, resource teachers and psychologists actually supporting students, whether it be on assessment that we have already started and other services, speech and, and language. So we'll increase that more and more. But there are students in the hub who are in special education. Students are receiving in-person services with some of our district partners. And in-person assessment, as I said, have already started at various school sites. And planning teams are working on increasing opportunities for in-person services in support of small groups of students that are able to utilize for its safety protocols. Next, yes.
Before you move forward, I didn't know if you were going to update us again, but there, weren't there some classes that, some training that was the Parents of Special Ed that you held? I think that that's an important to share with the community of what's happening there.
Absolutely. And I had it on my last time when I presented, I should have included it here. It's been really effective. We have had training that the Special Ed Department with Adult School worked on providing students' families. And those kinds of things will continue. And that's really our goal, to support the families, because we know families are doing a lot more at home than they ever had to do before. So we need to have that increase even more, increase that partnership. So yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. Next.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dot's hand's raising on my right-hand side. My kids here. Go ahead, Dot.
You, you have on this slide that planning teams are working on increasing opportunities for in-person services. What kinds of opportunities are happening now for in-person services for our special education students?
Yeah. So right now, some of our students who are in resource are actually in the hubs. So they are getting support. But they can also have, we're working to increase that to perhaps even have smaller hubs where we can have students who are, in addition to those in resource, students in special day class or students who need additional support to come in. But we can, um, some of our students who are in programs that are district partners are actually going to those programs for not the whole day, for part of the day, but they're not on site, um, here. And for example, the things that we are looking at are speech and language and resource support. We're pushing in for those supports. And I know that I saw, um, actually, a psychologist working with a student today. So. Yes.
Go ahead, Dot.
Sorry, I have another question. Um, how, were there many requests in addition to the students who were invited to join the learning hubs? Were there requests outside of that to, to be able to join those?
Yeah. So, um, if you recall, we didn't actually put it out for people to request because it is so limited. We wanted to identify students who we knew, we had worked with parents, who had, um, great difficulty in accessing distance learning. And so we reached out to them. But even of the ones that we reached out to, not all showed up. So we added new people, but we then keep them the same cohort. So now, um, I think looking at a possibility of increasing those hubs, now we can actually have students who may not have the same level of difficulty, but kind of tiered in to increase the number.
And I add that because I know we didn't put out that, that invitation to apply to join the hub. But I know parents, you know, parents are going to ask. So I was just wondering if there were any who, who asked in addition to those that were invited.
Yeah, and I agree with you. We actually have had parents who have asked. So I know there is interest. Um, and, and that's really our goal, uh, to move, moving forward, to make sure that we support, you know, if, if families are really requesting because it's not possible to do this at home or it's very difficult, we want to support them. So great questions. Next slide. So the latest update is that Alameda County Public Health Department, as you know, suspended the waiver process because we are already in orange-tier districts and they had done it when we were in red. Districts are allowed to reopen elementary schools as of October 13th. And however, the process to reopen is complex, and I want to be really honest about that, requiring several important elements, some of which are still in progress for us. Um, school reopening checklist from Alameda County Public Health Department and Alameda County Pub, Public, um, Office of Education was released on the 6th of October. And on the next slide, um, you will see what the requirements are and the elements are, and we're going to show you the checklist. So, um, we have, um, a link on here to our reopening and safety plan. I want everyone to know that since March, we have been working on our safety plan. And we have had so many things that we've put in place because, as you remember, we've had many of our employees, um, actually onsite. And now we have students onsite in the hubs. So our safety plan is completed. Negotiations with bargaining units to ensure adequate staffing is in progress. And we're going to work collaboratively on that. Um, board decision on dates and phases to reopen is pending, so that's for you to consider. And once a decision has been made, then the reopening plan has to be reviewed by the Alameda County Office of Education and the Health Department. Um, and it also needs to be online. We have already posted the reopening and safety plan with what we already have online. And then, um, next slide will kind of clarify what we still need to work. So this is the checklist that we have from the county that we have to work on. I'm going to have to get closer so I can see better. So if you notice on the left, first, we start with, does you, your plan provide contact information in reopening plan specifics? Yes, we have almost everything in place, except we have left the date of reopening and the date of submission. And, uh, blank. Um, health order and guidance have, are we familiar with all of the health orders and what's included? And have we familiarized ourselves with all of those requirements? Yes, we have. Um, the next element, um, is, uh, area is, does your plan provide the following school information? Which is, you know, how many students are coming in? Um, do the number of staff and all of that in grade levels? We do not have that because it's still pending. And that's the part that we do need to continue to work with our, um, also our employees, our teachers, union to make sure that we continue our conversations around, around that. And I think you did hear, um, during CVTA President Report, that they had done a, um, a survey of staff already. And but we'll continue to work on, what does the hybrid look like? Are there any other issues that we need to work out to make sure that we are able to do that? Um, school district plan posted, well, we aren't ready to post yet. But cleaning, we're, we have that completed. We have all of the procedures and processes and materials in place. And cohorting, this is how, um, you know, the hybrid program or model that we have actually allows us to have only half of the students at a time. So we do have all those cohorting requirements. We have figured that out and it's in place. Um, and then, uh, let's see. Space and routines, we have the physical distancing, we have that in place. We have the entrance, egress in, and, uh, all of that in place already in, at the district level and on school sites when students, whenever that is, when they return. We do have all our face covering. We have them for students, for staff. We have shields, we have masks, we have all of those things in place. Um, we have our supplies, we have ordered our cleaning supplies. We have all of that in place as well. We have the health screening for student staff in place. We have all of those according to the guidance from the Health Department. Um, we also, next, it's hygiene practices. We have put those in place. We have them. Um, identification and tracing of contacts. And we've actually got a really good plan in place that, um, that also, also is following exactly what the county Health Department has. We have had it in place. We have been working on it. And we were very happy to attend a four-hour session just on contact tracing with the Health Department that went into all of those details. And we know that we're doing a good job. So our plan matches what they have required. So our nurses, um, and our Director of Human Resources, as well as our Student Services, all attended that training. Um, staff training and family education, we are actually in process of, I, I think, although we have done a lot of parent information and family education for what we're doing in distance learning, there will be some things that we want to educate our families and help them understand and train them on how, for example, you drop off your children, how you pick up, and what happens. Those things will happen once we, before we get started.
Pardon me, before you get going, I know that you're going to. Parveen, before you get going, I know that you're going to, we haven't, I don't know if you're, how far in the works you are, but just for the community to know, we talked about the teacher survey. We're also sending out another parent survey soon as well. Can you share a little bit about this, maybe after this or at some point?
Absolutely, absolutely. We are going to send a survey about distance learning out and all of this. So I'm going to wait till you actually have your discussions, and then that will help me with the introductory paragraph that's on that survey to go out. But we've looked at a survey to send out quickly. Testing for staff, this is not checked off, but now I can check it off tonight. Because we did receive, there was a press release, I knew, we had been in discussion with the county, but they did just put out a press release today that says they have secured Curative, which is a company that we're going to be working with, with testing. The recommendation is once a month, but we want to make sure that it's available to all of our staff. And that is actually in place, because before, when we talked to vendors, it was about a million to $2 million a year that we had to spend on testing. So, and that would be impossible for us at that point. So now, this would be as very, as minimal cost, if any, because they have worked with insurance companies that actually are required to do this kind of testing. So that one will be checked off as well. Triggers for switching to distance learning, we have that in place, and communication plan we have. So there are some elements, obviously, in here that we need to work on, most importantly, to ensuring that we have adequate staff. So.
One thing for the testing, you said it's ready to check off, and you have a little note in there. I know this is the checklist from the county, but they do talk about, recommend that teachers and staff are tested at a minimum once a month. Can, did they share anything about the reasoning behind that or anything like that?
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of conversation around testing. You know, you can, you have places where they're testing every day, NBA, right? And some other places. But I think it's about, it really, to me, when we asked, like, is it, is it every month? Does it help? I think more than anything, I think it's reassurance. And psychologically, I think it helps people to know that it's available. And obviously, when anybody has any symptoms, they get tested anyway. It's not once a month. So, you know, I think they looked at the feasibility of it, but also making sure that it is actually available. I see that trustee Theodore has her hand.
All right, it's hard to see your hand with your hand, the red hands, next to you. Thank you. And then I see Gary's hand too, so Dot, you, and then Gary.
Well, surveillance testing is a public health strategy. So, you know, of course, if a staff member has symptoms, they're going to go to their provider and get tested. But surveillance testing, which is what we're talking about here, catches those people who are asymptomatic, or who don't think their symptoms meet the COVID, you know, infection. So that's why it's once a month, and it's not every day, and it's not 100% every, every month. So it's a public health strategy to catch those people who are infected but are asymptomatic.
Gary, did you have your hand up?
Not really, so I'll have a more general comment, but when we're done with this one, nothing on testing thing.
Yeah, so just to, to talk, oh, I lost the.
The deck.
I lost the deck, yeah. So, actually, that is the end of our deck. But what I wanted to say about testing is, I also want you to know that it will be onsite. So that makes it a lot easier for folks to get tested. And there are things we have to put in place, but we will be able to do that. It's very doable. So, and once a month, it would, it might be as if, you know, you divide up your staff and say 25% each week and whatnot. And again, as trustee Theodore said, at any time, anyone with symptoms can get tested right, well, wherever they have insurance. And if that's not available within 48 hours, then they can actually go somewhere. So, and it's covered, it's covered. So, what was it, President, you said something, Whitaker, you said something about, as I was saying about the checklist? This.
It was just that, that survey that we were talking about with parents, what that would entail and what that looks like. You know, we had talked to the community earlier in the year about how we're going to be re-reaching out, and I just wanted everybody to know about that.
Yes, yes. Yeah, because I really want to know how distance learning, we want to know. I know the schools have asked constantly. I know the teachers are, you know, aware of it, and they're working really hard if there are any issues. But we want to know how else we can support our families with this, during distance learning.
Monica.
When you say the cost of testing is covered, is the district covering that? Or is the Alameda County Office of Education? Or is it assumed everybody will just have the cost covered under their personal insurance?
Okay, so that's a great question. What's happening is Curative actually has worked with, for example, for most of our employees, it's either Kaiser or Blue Cross or any kind of insurance they have. So basically, they will bill the insurance. And the other companies that were telling us it costs us $1 million to $2 million, they were saying, well, we're going to charge you that, and then you bill the insurance, because they wouldn't do it. So the nice thing with what Alameda County has been able to do is actually make sure that that is already in the contract, so that they won't bill us. They bill the insurance companies. And there may be, when I say minimal cost, we have to see, you know, if there are any glitches in any of the insurance companies. But the two big ones that we have, I know, are covered along with some other ones. Now, if you remember, under the ACA, all employees are required to have insurance. So if they don't have it through us, they actually have to prove to us that they have insurance. So.
Joe?
I think it would be reassuring, Parveen, if you could just go a little bit further into the press release about how long the test results are. People would feel good to hear that.
Yes, so the press release actually, let me go to that part. Beginning with the elementary, let's see. So when we had our conversation, and I can't remember if it's actually in here, but our conversation has been, so there are these kits that are brought to sites, and there has to be someone observing and doing that, but it's pretty easy to do. And then they collect it and return it, and take it to where it needs to be analyzed. But we are supposed to have that answer within 48 hours. And at one point, we were hearing even sooner. So it's not the five to seven days that we're hearing.
Well, I appreciate all of the work that has gone into this plan, and you, Parveen, collaborating with my colleagues at the Public Health Department, as well as with Alameda County Office of Education. It's a solid plan. And I think there, of course, is a lot of fear still about opening schools, because we see what's happening in other states. And school opening has become so politicized, becoming sort of this conservative versus liberal state kind of thing. But one thing I feel confident about is that we live in a progressive county, and we have a progressive public health department. I also recognize that there was some initial doubt about the ability of the public health department, because we closed schools before the public health department said that we should. And so there's still this unsettled mistrust of the public health department. But I know we've come a long way since March in figuring out these plans and putting in all of those things that we need to bring our students back on campus safely. But the big variable for me right now is cold and flu season. And, you know, despite this wonderful plan, and the fact that we're in orange, and our county is doing a great job of controlling the virus, and we've got the contact tracing, and we've got empty hospital beds, it's really unsettling for me to bring kids back next week or next month, because we are entering into cold and flu season, we're entering into the holidays, where you know families are going to gather. And 90% of the virus spread is really from that kind of interaction. Only 10% of the virus spread has been from workplace spread. So it's not a huge source of viral spread in our county. But with the holidays coming up, it's going to happen. And those numbers are going to increase. So that, that's the thing that has me most concerned about opening. But like I said, I think this plan is great, and I really appreciate all the work and collaboration that has been done with you and with the Public Health Department.
I'm going to go Gary, Joe, and then Parveen, and then I'd like to say something.
Well, I would echo Dot's thoughts there. I mean, I think it's terrific that we have a great plan here, and that's been a lot of work. And I think it's fantastic that we have moved as far as we have. And I think I'm really happy to be in Alameda County where the numbers are going down right now. But you know, Dr. Fauci and many others have been very concerned about the fall, and as Dot said, the flu season opening up. And, you know, we do, in the holiday, after every major holiday that we've had so far, we've had a spike in the number of cases. And as Mark Malatich said earlier, it would be very bad to open and then close again. That's sort of a nightmare situation. So I agree with Dot, and I think I would go even a little further. I think we need to wait in, in January or in February to see where we are then, before we make any kind of a decision. Because if people come back, and I hope they don't, but if a lot of people get infected over the major holidays, they might not be showing the cases until toward the mid to end of January. And I note that this is down as a possible action item. I'm not exactly sure what the action item is, but, so I'll ask a question. Is it that we might make a decision as to at least defer opening for a period of time? Is that why it's on here as action?
It is, but we want, before we take action, we want to allow the public to comment, so.
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing with it. So thanks, that's all I had to say is.
Joe, Parveen, I have something to say, and then Shane.
Okay, well, I'm kind of following up on Gary. I was prepared to make a suggestion on action, but I want to wait until we've heard from the public. But I will comment on the report in that I want to thank Parveen for it. And I also want to recognize and value the time and expertise that our staff has put into this, as well as maintaining their focus on science and data. And so when we got the roadmap, I sat down with the other roadmaps that we've received from the Alameda County Office of Education, from AXA, from CSBA, and compared the four of them to make sure that everything was covered. And I believe that that happened. But today, the challenge has changed. The challenge is we're staffing and testing, and now we know testing is no longer a challenge. But we still have the other one. And so I was going to suggest a specific time for the board to reconsider the opening process. So I'm going to wait and do that, and after we hear from the public.
Parveen?
Unmute. When this is all over, I will be happy never to say unmute and mute. But I want to say, as you noticed on the checklist, I mean, you know, I can sit here and say, yeah, it's great. We would love to have our students back in class, and it's just great to see them. But we really need to think about the whole picture. And as you saw in my presentation, there are elements we do not have yet. So I can't sit here and say, we're ready to make that, we're ready to open. But you obviously have an opportunity, and the reason it's a possible action is so that you can have that opportunity to discuss. And as trustee Los said, perhaps a suggestion that, you know, after she can share that. But, but really, I mean, look at the, we've done a lot of work. And I do want to say, our Health Department is very conservative. They are, they have been excellent. I think they could have said some of the things that they waited on, because they're not just looking at a couple of things, they really are looking at the totality of what needs to be in place. And for those of us who've been here, when there is even one case, it takes a lot of work to manage. And I want to give kudos, I don't want this to sound, I really, I know I'm the superintendent, but none of what I get done is done by me without my team. Every single department, every single one in business, every division, from human resources, from educational services, all of our classified, everybody's been working on this plan. So I want to thank every single one of them for it.
I do want to say that I agree with the sentiments of Dot, Gary, Joe, Parveen, about, you know, looking at a time to think about it. I think the biggest thing, or one of the biggest things that families have been facing and concerned about, and I think all of us have, is that limbo feeling. And that feeling of, when am I going to know when my kid's going to be back? Or at least consider it. Right now, it's just, there's this ambiguous decision of potentially based on what the county says and when they say it. And I am too concerned that if we decide to go back too soon, we're going to have, you know, if cases rise, if things change, that's going to be another change for our families, another change for our kids that are disruptive. And I do think that it's important that we look at, you know, hey, we're part of the way there. We have a couple of items, we're doing really good so far. We looked at the health and safety, we looked at the science, we've talked to people, we're continuing to talk to people, we're working with the Health Department. You know, and how are we continuing, as we're doing, to reach out to families in need and different groups to make sure that they're heard through this hard, rough time? So I agree, and I'm on the same sentiment. Shane?
Just echoing what everyone else has said, like, thank you, Parveen, and everyone who's been working on this. It's really amazing work that you're doing. My only concern would be, of course, the health aspect, as health officials have said that cases are expected to arise due to cold and flu season. But also, many of the schools have been building this connection between the students and their teachers. And I would be afraid that if we reopen, many of our students would transfer to the virtual academy, which would break that connection that we've really been pushing. And then if the school were to close again, it would just create this whole disconnection for students. So that's another concern that I would have.
Monica?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I wasn't quite clear on what the possible action would be, because not having looked at all the underlying documents, and this is not to diminish at all from what you've done, you and your staff have done, Parveen, because I know you've done a lot of work, and you guys are totally wrapped up in this. But it's like, the presentation tonight was, was kind of short. It's like, without looking at all the underlying documents, I feel like, do I really have enough information to take action? And the last thing, my sister lives in Wisconsin, and my nieces are in school, and she is terrified every day when her girls go to school and come home. And I don't want to put any parents in that situation where they have to be afraid when their kids are going to school. So I just. when their kids are going to school. So I just want to make sure, and this is not second guessing you or anything. It's just, I just want to feel comfortable before I, I vote on a date or a time or when kids are going back, that I know everything. And I've been going to all the Alameda County town halls and, and meetings, you know, and I'm the rep. And nobody else is really, you know, when we were talking about this at the hybrid learning meeting last week, nobody else is really ready to go back because they haven't finished negotiating their MOUs with their bargaining units. The only district that had an MOU in place is Emeryville. And I think last night we were talking at Jensen and you said they're a very small district. So I'm sure the public has a lot of questions because I, I have thoughts in my mind, but I'm not sure what my questions are. It's just, I'm not quite sure I'm there.
Parveen? Oh, you're unmuted. Sorry.
I shared the document with the whole community and all of you before. So, and I think that was the document that trustee loss was mentioning. Checking out, and I know you've read through it. But tonight's meeting was for you to see the checklist to see what we have in place already, which was already provided to everyone. But again, I, I did not come with a recommendation to open schools because that's a decision you need to make based on the facts that you have in front of you. So the possible action is you can decide to have dates and phases of reopening now, or you can decide when you're going to get back and do that. And I think that was when I, what I'm understanding, maybe I'm wrong, from trustee loss, is that's what she wanted to talk about. Which one are we going to go with? But perhaps, you know, I don't know if you want to actually listen and then go to Ms. Loss to see where that goes. So you do have an option to make any of those decisions. But like I said, there are things we do not have in place. As you said, we don't have all of our memorandums of understanding in place. We do have a structure for hybrid, but there are details we have to work out. And I think to your point, I don't know of any other districts in Alameda County that's ready to open tomorrow. Not only that, today I had another meeting with Contra Costa superintendents. And all of them are facing the same thing. Many of them. I know there's talk about some of them starting maybe in transitional kindergarten and first grade. All of those also have their issues that come with it. So I don't know of any other district. I know private schools have opened, but they're much smaller and they have a different setup than we do. So I just leave it at that.
Dot, you had your hand up?
Yeah. So I wanted to say again that I think this is a good plan. And I think that there are a lot of things that are in place that will make this safe. And one of the things that we have is a community that wears their masks, which is not the same in other states. So you're, Monica, your nieces fear, I forget which relative, of getting sick. It, it, it's probably because the community is not as diligent. And I know we're also not 100% perfect. But I feel like the fact that we are in Alameda County and that we have people who believe in the the interventions to prevent the spread of COVID-19, that when we decide to bring students back, this will be a much safer situation than in states where they're not wearing masks or they don't think masks are important and they're hugging each other. So that being said, I still think that we can't make a decision to open now. I think we need to talk about, talk about after winter break and then see where we are countywide with our viral spread because it's not going to be the same as it is today. And then decide on an opening plan. How will we phase it in after that point?
Gary had a comment. And before we make a motion, I do want to make sure that we give time for public comment. So Gary?
Well, I just want to say that I think we're getting off into the weeds here a little bit because, you know, we've discussed this a couple of times, two or three times in previous meetings. And I have to say that I would be pretty surprised, you know, no one among us that I've heard over the months is saying anything about opening the schools anytime soon. I think my impression of the action item would be that we're going to decide not to decide tonight and we're going to defer it for some period of time into January or February. So I don't think school opening is on the cards. I could, unless I'm going to be really shocked by four other people here tonight. So that's just my comment. I'd be glad to hear what our friends in the audience have to say about it. Thanks.
Joe, did I see your hand up or no? Okay. So I think we're ready to go to public comment and we do have 16 people on the line. So I want to give, we normally have 30 minutes. So I say that we, if it's okay with the board, take up to 40 minutes, two minutes each. That way it allows for other people who come in and then we stop at 40 minutes. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, great consensus. So what, how we'll do this is those who have raised your hand, I will allow you to speak in order that the hand is raised. You will come over, there will be a timer and you'll be allowed to speak. So I will start with Shelley Ria, followed by Roosevelt Chang. And Shelley, there will be a timer? Shelley, are you there? Hello, Shelley?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I might not even need the whole two minutes. One thing I would like to say is that the uncertainty is killing us as parents. Like, it is so hard. So I would ask that you please, like, is it a month? Is it a week? We don't know. I really, really love what someone said, which is, let's, let's make a motion to defer to January. Because, you know, some San Jose schools are doing that. We have Thanksgiving, we have Christmas. Should we visit our family? If we visit our family, do we want our kids to go to school? Maybe we don't. So now we're going to flood the virtual option because we want to be able to see family. And, you know, like, I think there's just so much uncertainty with the flu season and Thanksgiving and Christmas. It would just, it'd be so much of a relief if we could have some idea. Because we, like I said, we don't know. Is it a week? Is it a month? So that, that's kind of my biggest thing, plea to you guys, is to please just give us something. Give us, say, we're going to wait till the, after winter break. The other question that I have is, we talk about a plan being published and I haven't seen it. I've been on the website. I can't find it. I don't know what happens if a student gets COVID. I don't know what happens if my student's exposed to COVID. I don't, I'm so in the dark. I don't understand what to do in those cases. So please, if someone could comment and just tell me, if I go to the website, where do I find this thing? Where do I find what tells me to do? And lastly, my only kind of thing to put out there is maybe this is even for the teachers who are listening and the school district. Can you please, I encourage you to pick Google Classroom or Zoom or Seesaw and make a choice and go with it because the kids with having all these different platforms, it's very confusing for them. It's very confusing to switch. We're finally in a groove. So please help us. Please help them. Please pick one platform. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Shelley, I'm going to mute your line. And we have Roosevelt Chang, followed by Norman Hurst. Roosevelt?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello.
Hi.
Please proceed.
Okay. At the July board meeting, Superintendent Amadi very clearly presented a target date of September 14th for students to return to in-person education. I understand that the state issued clear health criteria after that. As we've all seen, we have met that criteria as a county. We could have legally opened when we were in the orange zone. We are now in the yellow zone. Yet we have heard no concrete, specific date for school reopening. I am asking this board, this district, this superintendent, to give us a target date. Do not kick this can down the road. Do not punt on this issue. Do not tell us you will come back to then decide again. Give us a date so we can plan our lives. Tonight Superintendent Amadi shared a checklist of what remains to be completed. The incomplete items are mostly planning. Planning items should be within this district's control. If it is not within our district's control, then whose control is it? We are already five weeks behind the original date that was presented of reopening. We have had five additional weeks to prepare. Why are we not open? And even if the superintendent and the board did not intend to deceive, I believe many in our community would agree that you have created a false and misleading impression regarding preparedness. Let me be clear, my family's extremely privileged. My children are fine. But many families here are not. They desperately need their children to go back to school. Many experts have written about the long-term risk of not having schools. As a mother, I never thought that my children had no risk when I dropped them off to school. If I wanted a guarantee of no risk, I would have never sent them to school. I wouldn't let them ride their bikes. I wouldn't let them swim. I wouldn't take them in my car to go on the freeway. There are always risks and I am thinking of the big picture. I'm thinking of all those children who need to go back for in-person instruction. There have been plenty written on the subject and if you want to read them, ask what you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Roosevelt. I'm going to mute your line. And I'm going to allow Norman Hurst, followed by Sarah Raymond. Norman? Hello, Norman.
Hello, and thanks for the opportunity to talk with you. I'm a family physician and epidemiologist at UCSF, but I'm speaking to you today as a parent of a second grader and an eighth grader in your district. Your district leadership, teachers and staff have done a great job with distance learning, but it isn't enough or the same. And especially for my second grader, he needs to learn how to work in a school environment, how to make friends, how to work and interact with other kids. And this just is not possible through distance learning. It shouldn't be the job of the school board or the teachers' union to second guess our public health officials. It is their call on when it's appropriate to reopen the schools. I completely disagree that it would be a failure if we went back to hybrid learning and then later the epidemic got worse and we had to close the schools again. On the contrary, we should take advantage of any opportunity we have. We don't know how many there will be or what the future of the epidemic will be. It would not be right to hem and ha and drag our feet looking for some guarantee of complete security, which is impossible. I happen to be 64 years old and have asthma, but I go to work every day and see my patients because I believe it's important. And because I know the risk is low if you take appropriate precautions. And I believe that the work this district does is just as important as the work I do. And frankly, if you as board members or teachers don't feel the same way, it's time to get out of the way and let somebody else do the job. Of course, we need to make special arrangements for families or staff who are at especially high risk and you have the CVVP. Maybe there are other options, but I assure you, there are many, many parents who feel the same way I do. Please don't kick the can down the road. Do your job or get out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Norman. I mute your line and lower your hand. And I will allow Sarah Raymond, followed by Sarita Razulazad. Sarah?
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. So I just wanted to say that this afternoon, part of the meeting, I did review the checklist that's been discussed tonight. I personally don't feel that I have a clear understanding of what the safety plan is and what the measurable safety criteria really are. Lots of the boxes on this plan are checked off, but the details behind them need to be shared with families so that we understand how and why decisions are going to be made. Without detailed information, I find it difficult to trust what is being presented. I just have a few random comments as well. With respect to testing, I wanted to ask, what about the kids? Are any of the kids ever going to be tested by the school? How long does the, does it take to get the results that you're planning to, of the test you're planning to run with the teachers? Will people being tested be quarantined while awaiting results? I also share concerns about the timing right now. I don't, we have cold and flu season coming up, holiday gatherings coming up. Plus, two of the COVID hotspots in Alameda County are right next door in Hayward, and I don't think that we've heard quite enough personally to feel comfortable with a schedule being set tonight. If the schools were to be reopened, some things that I feel are lacking in terms of details are assurances to us parents as to how cohorts remain insular. I understand also that negotiations with staff and teachers are not complete at this time, and I think it is premature to make a plan without their plans being solidified with the distance, with the schools. I think I'm going to leave it at that. I worry about the environment in our classrooms. I worry that there haven't been modifications have been made to ensure circulation of clean, fresh air. Mostly though, I do worry that we're just in a really bad situation still and I.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm going to mute your line. And I'm going to call on Sarita, followed by Jennifer. Sarita, are you with us?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
This is Sarita Razulazad. I'm a parent of two daughters currently attending independent elementary. I have recently shared my thoughts via email, but I thought it was important to give thanks and recognition publicly as well. As parents, it's easy to give feedback and voice concerns when there are challenges, but I believe it's equally important to pause and take the time to give thanks. I have been attending all of our board meetings and genuinely feel the support on Zoom over emails and with all of your great communication with parents within the community. I want to thank Superintendent Amadi for her leadership and for paving the way. I truly feel that she is speaking from her heart and I appreciate this empathy so much. And for all of our board members who are also working tirelessly, asking the right questions and ensuring the safety of our community is always front and center. Lastly, I want to send a special shout out to our independent teachers, Mrs. Field and Mrs. Santos, as well as our principal, Mr. HS. With regards to the reopening of school, I believe that safety and human life are by far much more important to prioritize than a rushed on-campus return. My hope is that we take a slow, phased-in approach and that we hold until at least January 2021 to minimize risk during the cold and flu season as well as disruption for our children and teachers. I would like to say that I appreciate that high-risk students have been prioritized for the support hubs and I believe that this was the correct path. I always say that it is about mindset and perspective. Yes, we have tough days. Nothing is perfect. But we figure it out and we look for the solution. At the end of the day, we are healthy and that is what matters. Everything else is fixable. So thank you again from the bottom of my heart for your support, dedication, energy, and for prioritizing the health and safety of our community. Before ending, the one ask that I do have is if we could explore the possibility of creating a parent advisory group to the district for our special ed families because I believe we truly need to get that set up as soon as possible. Thank you again for everything and for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Sarita. I'm going to mute your line. All right, Jennifer to top, followed by Mary O'Brien.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to talk. I just want to say that, you know, virtual learning has had its place for, you know, keeping students and the community safe during the time of the widespread COVID outbreak. And now, you know, as Superintendent Amadi has stated, we've now moved to the orange tier with less than 2.9 cases per 100,000 in the county and a 1.5% positivity rate. During the time of virtual learning, there has been no recourse for our most vulnerable kids. You know, I've just now learned about these hubs. There hasn't been transparency about who's been eligible for these hubs. And it seems even from this meeting that the hubs are extremely limited. There have been no recourse for parents who are essential workers who work outside of the home. So I believe that, you know, I've heard a lot about, you know, this great safety plan for reopening. I actually can't find the safety plan. I actually can't find the safety plan on the website. It would be great to be able to see it. But I feel that the school board should trust in the robustness of the safety plan and really urge the board to push for a safe reopening of the schools and at least for, you know, families who really need it. So what I've heard a lot at this meeting is that there's a lot of fear about things like cold and flu that is not COVID based on fear of holidays. But we cannot live in fear. Trust in the robust plan that you've put forth and please reopen the school safely.
Thank you, Jennifer, for your comments. I'm going to mute your line. I have Mary O'Brien next, followed by Amy Penn. Mary? Are you with us? Hello, Mary. All right, Mary, we do not hear from you, so I'm going to disable your talking for now. And I'll check back in with you one more time. Jillian Cardona. Jillian, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am asking that the board, in addition to other considerations being made tonight, review the parent surveys that were earlier mentioned prior to determining a reopening date. You mentioned earlier that the survey would ask about distance learning experiences, but I am asking that it also include questions about when families are comfortable sending their children back to school. You have mentioned how conservative Alameda County's public health department is. And I believe it is for that reason, among a few others, that we are only one of, I believe, two counties in all of California to be in the orange zone. We are seeing numbers rise across the country and internationally. I do hope that the board will listen to science professionals who agree that this winter will see COVID numbers continue to rise. And please agree to reassess your determination of a back-to-school date after the holiday breaks. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. I'm going to mute your line. Right, oops, Mary O'Brien, I accidentally unclicked her. Let me see if I can find her real fast. Sorry about those technical difficulties. Ha ha. Nope, sorry. Nope. Sorry. She moved. Mary, are you there? Mary is not here. All right, I'll disable her talking. I have Dana and then Michael Kuziak. So Dana. Dana, are you with us? All right, I will go on to Michael. Michael?
Yes, I'm here.
Please proceed.
Good evening. This is Mike Kuziak. I'm a parent of Teddy up at Creekside and Ollie over at Chabot. I am grateful that we have the outlines of a plan in place. I agree with other comments that we need to hear more about these details. One thing that we've learned about this period since March and then our conversations this summer is that this is changing, the science is changing quickly. Our ability to treat it, to find a vaccine, to have diagnostics, to test for it, it's changing rapidly. So one thing that was missing tonight that I didn't hear to echo someone else's comment, we didn't talk about student testing. I know that it may be a situation pretty soon that we have pretty ubiquitous testing that that's pretty inexpensive. So I'd like to kind of hear more about that opportunity in terms of returning to the classrooms. One thing that I think is really critical is that as parents and as teachers, as community members, this is rough. This is a rough time. And I've spoken with folks who work in our schools and I just would ask our parents out there to be gentle when you're calling in. I know this is a tough time, but we have people who are professionals trying their best. To our teachers, I know you're trying your best. To our parents out there, I know we're trying our best. So I would just remind all of us that when we express our frustration, we find productive ways of doing that. And to that point, I think we do need to listen to those parents we're hearing tonight who want to maybe see an earlier opening. I think the learning pods actually provide an opportunity to help with some of those family dynamics where it really is needed possibly. So I'm as happy to hear about those expanded criteria. I think these public members need to hear that more. But let's just listen to each other and try to find solutions with the tools that we have. And let's listen to the science and thank you everyone for their hard work.
Thank you, Michael. I'm going to mute your line. And next I have Neta, followed by Kristi Wurk. Neta?
Hello. Hi, can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, great. Yes, I so appreciate the board and the superintendent. I really appreciate your very careful approach to this pandemic. And, you know, I strongly feel that there's a big difference between being responsible and living in fear. And I don't think that we are living in fear. I feel that the board and the district have been very responsible with the approach that we're taking. It's very important to consider that when the schools open, it doesn't just affect the kids or the teachers and the staff. It really affects the entire community. And, you know, if we do have an outbreak, especially in the holidays, it's really going to be devastating. So I'm really glad to hear about your plans today. I think that the idea to delay consideration of opening the schools to January is very responsible. I'm also concerned about the timing of opening prior to that. I really also appreciate the support hubs for families that need it. And I am happy to see those expanding for those families. And I think that it keeps the consistency with the teachers and the rest of the students in all the classrooms. And finally, I do also want to say that I am happy to see this increased communication between the board and the parents and the district. And I hope that we will continue virtual meeting options in the future because so many more people can participate. I know I've never been able to previously. And I would also really like to see an increase in parent advisory committees, specifically for special education and also for health and safety and maybe other types of issues that we haven't had to consider in the past. Thank you so much for all your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Neta, I'm going to mute your line. Dot, I don't know why you're raising your hand right now, but we're not taking comments from the board.
No, there are people who are calling in that don't know how to raise their hand. So I'd like you to share with them, please. That's why.
Star nine. If you are calling in and you are on the phone, please press star nine and that will raise your hand and so I can identify it and see you on the screen. So again, if you were on the phone, please press star nine. Thank you for that. All right, Kristi, and then followed by Tina. Kristi, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
All right, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that no matter what the district does, there are going to be people that are not going to be happy. In just what you've heard tonight, you hear different points of view. And I think ultimately what we have to look at is the safety and health of our students and our staff. I think that the staff has been working tirelessly trying to get their playlists going and to do everything that's required to be successful in the distance learning. And I think that we need to give a big shout out to them for working so hard at what they're doing with little complaint. And I'm very proud to say that I was a teacher that just retired. And so I know how hard it was with the distance learning. But I really ultimately think that the board needs to make decisions that are based on the science. And I would appreciate if the district could provide more details so that the families know what to expect with regard to the safety of the staff and the students. And so I'm hopeful that the district can provide that. And then I just ultimately, I want to make sure that, you know, there's also transparency in how we're communicating with our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. I'm going to mute your line. I have a 925-708-6525. So if that's you, I'm going to allow you to speak. Hello, are you with us on the line?
Hi, this is Amanda Carey.
Hi, Amanda. We can hear you. Please proceed.
So I, as many of you may know, started a petition requesting Alameda County to allow the waiver, which now is a moot point, and have over 200 signatures, most of those being Castro Valley Unified School parents, even though I encourage it to be sent throughout the county. And I wonder how many parents would have signed had they not felt fear of all the trolls and keyboard warriors attacking people for having this different opinion than them. And you have someone like Norman on the phone saying, hey, this is what I do for a living. We're good to go. Ever since this started, it's been about, we're going to trust the science. It's about the science, the science. So the science, all the scientists are saying, go back. Right? So why aren't we going back? You have pediatricians saying, get these kids back. We are doing a disservice to our immune system by hiding. You're not going to be able to handle a cold because you've been hiding for six months. More and more people are getting the flu shots this year than ever before. So we're going to take care of that little problem. The flu is more impactful than COVID on children. Yet we send our kids to school every flu season and don't shut down the schools. And people choose not to vaccinate their children. So when you look at things like that and you just go, common sense says, it's time to go back. We have got the green light from the county, the state, whether you're a fan of Fauci now or not because he did something with Trump or whatever. You know, believe him, don't believe him. He said we could go back. The CDC, who, everybody, it's time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to mute your line. Next, we have Julia O'Royall, followed by Taylor Brazil. Oh, she does not want to speak. Taylor? Are you with us? Hello, Taylor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Taylor Brazil. I'm a teacher at Canyon Middle School. And I'm not really going to comment on the official reopening of schools, but I did want to touch on the topic of the support hubs that was mentioned earlier and by a couple of commenters. And it was said that they're going really well. I do believe the intentions behind them are good and the appropriate precautions have been taken. And perhaps at most schools, it's going really well. I will say I'm really proud of everything that Canyon's done to make things safe for the kids in our hub up on the hill. To my best understanding, kids came onto campus early last week for the first time. And I believe we started with about seven kids and haven't exceeded 14. Kids were in a large space and separated all day. But we were notified this morning, actually, that the Canyon hub has been temporarily shut down because a student within it has been in contact with somebody who tested positive for COVID. So it was only functioning for less than one and a half weeks before this even happened. So I just wanted to make that comment because it seems that it kind of wasn't really touched on that maybe most hubs are going well, but there are some areas for things to go wrong. And I do admire the efforts to support students in this way, but I just felt like that was something that needed to be mentioned. And then the implications of this also make me really concerned about what could happen if and when we return. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. I'm going to mute your line. We have Norman Hurst back. Norman?
I'm sorry, I already spoke. Thank you for calling me.
Thank you, Norman. I'll lower your hand. We have Jackie, followed by David Muller. Jackie Stone, are you with us?
I am. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Hi, I am a teacher. I work at Castro Valley. Hi, thank you for taking me. I just wanted to share that I've taught Shane. Shane, hi. You are an amazing student, but he is an exceptional student. And what really got me tonight is when he said, you know, we've formed all these relationships with our teachers. That is not the case that I experience with most of my students. And so as a teacher, what is just the hard thing, and I don't want to get emotional here, but I have all these students on Zoom, half I don't see. I don't know them. I don't know their personalities. They haven't connected with me, which is why I teach. I have those connections with my students. And being in the classroom, being able to see them face to face, and I know high school will be the last to go back, but just thinking about my own little ones who are at Chabot and at Creekside, they don't know their classmates. They're missing out on that. And I feel like if nothing less, getting those small groups, getting a hybrid back, they're building those social connections and bonding with their teachers. And that is the element that Zoom cannot provide. And I second everybody that's talking, follow the science. You guys said we were going to come back when it was time. And I would love just a plan, a date, so we can get going and know, especially as parents and me as a teacher, that I am going to have some connection with my students and that we are going to turn this around. And because, I mean, just in the publication that came out from NEA Today to all of our teachers, 50% of students surveyed this summer said, I am anxious, depressed and stressed out doing virtual learning. And I want those numbers to change. I want to help my students. I want to be connected. So please let me do that. Let me do my job. That's it.
Thank you, Jackie. I'm going to mute your line. I have David, followed by the 510 number.
David?
Yes, please proceed.
So I've been to a few of these meetings now and I've been a little frustrated that so much of the focus is on safety. I understand that that's really important, but this is a public health issue and we have experts within the county that are responsible for that and are providing guidance for that. So I really, I feel like the expertise here and the focus here should be on education and how we can address those best practices in our educational settings and not necessarily deciding whether or not, like trying to make a judgment on whether or not this is appropriate to open up or not. If the public health guidelines say that it is, I think we should believe that. I understand that people are worried about the inflexibility. We feel that as well. I would prefer having some degree of certainty. And if people are concerned about the holidays, maybe we just don't, we do remote for two weeks after the holidays. Like, let's try to look for ways where we can have social interactions for our kids. I think that, you know, we try to do a good job with education with our kids and help support them, but we can't replicate the social interactions in school. So for us, like a week or two in school and then a week or two off would be preferable to just no social interaction. I don't think we should see any switch back to hybrid, back to distance learning as a failure. And another thing with the cases, like, what we need to avoid is the schools being places where transmission is happening. There are going to be COVID-positive cases within the schools. But if we're following the right guidelines and doing a good job of controlling the spread within the school settings, what we really need to focus on is not having spread happen in the schools. And that's where I'd like to see the focus. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'm going to mute your line. Next, I have a 510-940-8875 number. a 510-940-8875 number. Hello, are you there? Hello, 510-940-8875. All right. I'm going to disable talking and I'll come back. Julio Arroyo is is ready for us now. Julio.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I want to reiterate what's said, what's been said by some speakers, but I also really want to talk about that. I feel like what's being missed in this whole discussion is the parents who do not feel comfortable to send their kids to school can put their kids in the virtual academy and distance learning. So the folks that are calling and saying, I'm concerned about this and that, I would imagine those would be the people who would not send their kids to school. And if they have the opportunity to stay at home with their children and make it all work, and they feel like that's what the best, then I think that's the reason there's that option. What I'm very disheartened about is I thought this meeting was going to be about really some concrete action. Before schools started, this board made a decision that shortly after Labor Day, we're planning to come back. And then what I saw was a wave of from the teachers' union saying, no, that's not going to happen. We're risking our lives, so on and so forth, which I can appreciate. I'm the central worker. I've worked every single day since this pandemic started, so I understand what they're talking about. But at the same time, I also don't get paid if I don't go to work, which the teachers is not, that's not the same scenario. The good thing that we're using public funds for essential workers like teachers to pay them regardless if we're in school or we're in distance learning. And I understand that both are scenarios where they're working, but it's not the same skin in the game as parents who need to make these tough decisions. They are being paid regardless. And I'm somebody who supported parcel taxes, supported when they pass flyers out whenever we're going to back to school night. So I support the teachers' union, but I really find it disheartening that they're not trying to do what's best for students. And I really want to see this board make a decision to have a special meeting just to talk about reopening, nothing else. And I think it's important we do that in November and in December and give us concrete plans because the states here say we can come back, and those are the professionals we should be listening to. Thank you.
Thank you, Julio. I'm going to mute your line. I'm going to try one more time to allow this person on the phone to talk. Your number starts with 510-940. All right. I have a Nerliffe. Nerliffe, are you there? Hello, Nerliffe. We cannot hear you speaking if you are speaking. All right, Nerliffe, I'm going to mute your line and try you back next. I have a Kylie. Hello, Kylie.
Hi. So I wanted to start off by saying big thanks to all the teachers out there because I know that they're, you know, obviously have a difficult job right now, trying to engage kiddos and everything like that through the computer. My son is in kindergarten, so he's just starting in like the public school district system. However, he had gone to preschool since he's been, you know, two and a half. So for me, it's just really difficult to see him struggle and cry and scream every single morning that he hates school because of it's now on the computer. And, you know, I am an ICU nurse. I work at a large hospital in Oakland. And like, we have definitely seen a decreasing COVID cases. There aren't any COVID cases in my hospital right now this evening. And, you know, I just want to see a light at the end of the tunnel and, you know, some sort of a time and something and have some hope for my son because it's just, it's so much of a struggle for us every single morning for him to do school on the computer. And it's, you know, it's just really disheartening. And so I would just hope that, you know, someone can just please, you know, take into consideration the social aspect of it for these kiddos as well. And, you know, obviously, things need to be in a safe way, but, you know, to come to some sort of a decision, at least a timeframe or something. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. I'm going to mute your line. All right, I have three more hands raised, and then we'll be at a little over time, so this will be the last three hands I'm going to take. So I have Roy Taylor. Roy, are you with us?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Roy. Please proceed.
Hi, I'm Simon Taylor. I'm currently a sophomore here at Caster Valley High School. And I wanted to thank all the teachers for the amazing job they're doing and board that is putting their heart and effort into trying to get us back to school. There have been many surveys going out to the parents about whether or not they want to actually go back to, but they want their kids to go back to school and what they think about the whole distance learning thing. But why aren't we asking the students about what they want? And because it's really them that are going to be in danger if we go back to school, and it's them. And why are we asking the parents about what could be the students' problems? Okay? And then also, I want to say that changing from distance learning, if we go back from distance learning to in-person learning, just go back to distance learning in two weeks, it's going to be very disruptive because we're going to have to relearn every, we're going to have to figure everything out. It's not going to be very smooth, and it's going to be very, very disruptive. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. To mute your line. I did see that Nerliffe came back, so I will ask him to speak next. Are you with us?
Hey. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you. Please proceed.
Great. Thank you very much. I want to extend my appreciation to the superintendent and to the board and to all the teachers and staff who have been working incredibly hard. I just wanted to briefly comment and say I agree with the comments from Trustee Theodore and Trustee Howard that they made and as well as Trustee Whitaker. I think this is a decision, although I know we're all as a community and as parents in a painful situation, that's been, excuse me, best revisited after the holidays. We don't know where the numbers are going. I know there's uncertainty, but with a pandemic like this, it's hard to say what the numbers are going to be next week or six weeks out. So I would urge the board to reconsider after the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Nerliffe, I'm going to mute your line. I'm going to bring in Julie Hodges.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for everyone for participating here. And I myself am really torn. For those of you that know me, I work at Willa Rock Center, which is the Alameda County Inpatient Adolescent Mental Health Center for kids 12 to 17. And trying to hold back my tears is hard right now. Me and my staff have been serving these children predicated predominantly since March. I can tell you the stories we've had of the the kids and the severity of illness, the depression, the increase of symptoms, the acuity. And me and my staff, me as an administrator, I go in there every day. I I'm in there with the staff. We've dealt with kids that are danger to themselves, danger to others. And these are the sickest kids of the county. And we've been there every day since March, helping these kids that aren't getting the help they need out in the community. So I just wanted to bring up that point. But looking at kids with more resources and higher demographics and that kind of thing, I'm starting to look around in my community and see a lot more depression and kids that just lack interest. They're not socializing as much anymore. And I think most importantly, they're overwhelmed with amount of the asynchronous learning. So I would just encourage the group to look at other avenues. I'm not saying go back to school, but I liked the gentleman's suggestion about maybe waiting after the holidays before we go back, maybe looking at lowering some of the amount of work that the kids are taking home. I have two very high-functioning kids that are exhausted all the time. They've kind of lost some of their personality. So maybe if we're not ready to go back to school, we look at the workload that the kids are having to do on their own and looking at some ways to support that because I'm seeing the mental health around me deteriorate. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I'm going to mute your line. Now, we did have three other people that were waiting, so I'm going to take these last three. And so let me find. Let me search. I have a caller. Going to allow you to talk. 650-451, are you on the line with us? All right, I will lower. Oh, are you there? Yes, you're there. Yes, please proceed.
Okay. Good evening. I feel, my name is Dana Pasgir. And I would like to talk to the public administrators and the teachers as well. I feel that fear has diverted teachers and their union from the fundamental purpose of being a teacher. And I would like to offer some different view on that. A teacher is a frontline worker and mandated disaster worker as a police officer or firefighter or healthcare worker or even a grocery store worker is. I am a government employee, and I've been going to work and serve the public for past six months from the office, walking to the office, stepping in the human waste and passing the needles on the sidewalk. That was the risk I signed up for when I accepted my position. And I feel you have forgotten about why you have chosen this profession. Now, when the children need you the most, you are hiding in the empty classrooms behind the screen. So can you imagine if you were a police officer that you have you have a stranger in your backyard and the police officer will tell you, ma'am, we cannot come out because because of COVID, we could get you COVID. But let's set up the Zoom meeting, and we will tell the person to leave your property. How would you like that? Teachers, I believe you you chose this profession because you believed in it and you wanted to teach the youth. But somehow now it feels that you're actually taking it as a job, just a job. And you are putting the burden of distance learning on the young children who are not mature enough to take this and and do that. And you expect them to be disciplined and to be on top of their independent work. Online learning is challenging for many adults, and you put this burden on them. I have mentioned to many of you what this does to them: frustration, loss of confidence, self-esteem, stress, sadness, anger, and emotional outbursts. The toll on mental health of our children is enormous. You are throwing them under the bus.
Thank you. Dana, I'm going to mute your line. And we have one more person with us today, which is, let's see. The Lynn family, but I have to find you in my. Longlist. Maiten Lynn. Are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Maiten, and I have three students, one fourth grade at Independent, one sixth grade at Canyon, and one ninth grade at CVHS. All my three children are doing really well with distance learning. And I would like to have a shout out to Canyon and CVHS teachers. They do not only just offer life learning, life teaching, but they also do the pre-recording, which I've seen my sixth grade students keep replaying the video to get the lessons and do the homework, which is really helpful. And I don't know whether she can do better if she's attending school because she does not have the video of that repetition learning. So I want to say that distance learning, I've seen are very effective. And teachers at Canyon and CVHS have done a very good job at it, and I would like to say thank you. And my fourth grade teacher also has done a good job. My student has done pretty much on her own. And sometimes she's sad because the SEL is early and it's pretty much SEL was like teacher trying to keep the student awake. But other than that, I thought distant learning is very effective, and I would like to continue with that if I have a chance to make the decision or if not, at least wait until the winter and the holiday season. Because I've seen how one is very disciplined and others are very non-responsible with their social circle. So it would be very unfair to teachers and other students who are within the bubble.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynn. We appreciate your comment. I'm going to mute your line. And that is the last of our comments. Before we proceed to Joe's proposal, I know that we had a lot of comments tonight, and we usually do not respond, but, you know, there were a lot of comments that I just want to make sure that we are clear on some items. The safety plan that we are referring to, we have shared with the community previously. And we can probably talk offline about how we can communicate more or put it in a place on the website that's more visible. But Parveen, if you could answer some of the items that were brought up, that'd be great.
Yeah, I would love that. Thank you. First of all, the plan has been on the website. It is on the COVID page, and if you go to our front page of the website, there's a button that you push and you go right to that page. We also had it linked into the agenda item tonight. And Amy is trying to, she probably already has it done, she's going to put it on every single school's website as well, so that people have it. And because it's a live document, we keep updating it, so all the updates or anything else we need to add will be in there. There is too much information in it because that is really what most school districts just keep behind the scene and do. We wanted to make sure everyone sees everything we have in there. That's the plan. The other piece I wanted to say is there was a question about student testing, testing students. And I wanted to say that right now, so the health department has requirements and recommendations, right? The requirement is you've got to wear a mask, you've got to be six feet apart, you've got to do, have all of these things in place. But at the same time, they have a recommendation for testing staff. There is no recommendation that they're giving us a requirement for student testing. Now, if any student has symptoms, the goal is to get them tested as soon as possible. But that is something that that all districts are trying to look at to see how we can support families. But it's not a recommendation or a requirement because they know it's really difficult to do that. I can tell you that for some of our families who may not have insurance, we actually have places they can go to, like clinical and all of these places. And we have actually utilized their services. They've done an amazing job. The other piece I wanted to clarify is that the hub, there was a person who spoke about the hubs and how we had to close one of them. I want to be really clear. Anytime you open anything, there is an expectation, as some of the folks who spoke, there is an expectation that there will be cases. But the 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 great thing is that we have processes in place and actually in working directly yesterday with the health department, all of our staff who is who are responsible, we were all in conversation. We were not even required to close our hub, but we made a decision to be on the safer side after working with them. So we have dealt with it, but there will be cases, and we have a process. But that's just real life. Most of the cases, I think Trustee Theodore shared, that most of the things that are happening, it isn't that people are catching it at work or in class, it's outside. But it, again, that's not, that's not in our control. But I wanted to say one thing that I said, and I will repeat, we must increase the number of hubs. But that requires that we have staff. And I hope that whatever And I hope that whatever recommendations you make also gives us direction to finish all of our collaborative discussions as soon as possible, so that we're not here three months from now saying, we still don't have that done. That we're almost done, and it should be done as soon as possible. So I think I answered all of the questions that came up. And I know Shane knows this, but I've met with the high school students, the group that I meet with, and I did hear the same thing you're hearing from everybody: a lot of stress, just overwhelmed. And they need that social connection. And I want parents to know that we're actually looking very hard at finding ways for students to have that kind of communication and socialization as much as possible.
Dot, you had a comment, but I want to make sure we go to Jo for her proposal after. Go ahead. You had your hand raised? Wait, hold on. Dot had a question, comment?
Is it a question?
No, I have a comment. Can I make that comment now?
Yeah, I would like, yeah, then we'll go back to Jo.
Okay. I'm troubled by this false equivalency that I have been hearing about comparing teachers' jobs to medical professionals or first responders. It's a very different situation when you're in a classroom with 15 other human beings than a first responder situation. So I want to honor our teachers and that it's not the same as going to see your doctor or a policeman responding to an incident or a call. And I also want to say that I know that we can do this safely after cold and flu season. And yes, this is not the flu. We don't have a vaccine for this. Hurt immunity is going to take out a lot of people if that's, you know, where people think we should be going with this. We need to be really cautious. And it is our job as trustees to question and to make these decisions for our community.
Okay, Dot. Jo?
Well, I want to make sure that we honor the comments that the public made tonight. There was a wide gambit of suggestions, et cetera. But when Parveen amended the agenda to have possible action, I went ahead and put together a motion that enables us, per parliamentary procedure, to have this discussion. So my point is to put it on the floor, hopefully gain a second so that we can have the discussion. And then we can each make a decision if we want to vote for it or against it. So the motion I prepared is, I move that Castro Valley Unified School District delay the reopening timeline of schools until January 2021, given that in January, all conditions required by the Alameda County Public Health Department are met.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
So I get to speak to my motion?
Sure, yes. Go, Jo, and then.
So I honestly believe that we are trying to do the very best that we can. And remember, months ago, when we first started this conversation, I remember making the comment that we have to understand that we're not going to make everyone happy. And we're probably going to not make very many people happy. And that was part of our discussion about data and science and how we had to do this process. And I completely understand people's concern about social emotional health. I know that Castro Valley Unified School District is an absolute leader in social emotional health issues. I don't know of another school district that has invested the people and the time and the energy into that for our students. So I get that. I also get that our safety of our students and our staff is paramount. And we still have some hurdles that we haven't been able to get over to open anytime soon. So as soon as we can make those hurdles a little bit smaller or have them go away, we at least will be able to provide our community that we're looking at a timeline of the board reconsidering in January 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Jo. Gary?
I would just ask what January means here. I mean, could you amend that to say that we would look at it at the first or second meeting in January, preferably the second, rather than January 3rd or January 31st? I'm not sure where we are in that.
Don, did you want to clarify?
Gary, my intention was that we wouldn't make a decision about actually reopening schools in January. We would look at the timeline in January. And that would probably, I would say, the first meeting in January.
That actually was not my question. My question was, when should we have the discussion? Not when we should, you know.
Wait. That one.
So you answered that there. You're suggesting the first meeting. That's fine.
Monica?
One of the parents suggested possibly having a forum or roundtable or a discussion just to discuss the whole reopening process. That might be a good idea. I mean, this was labeled, discuss the roadmap to reopening and safety plan. You know, I don't know if that really gave parents enough notice in terms of whether they really realized we might be talking about a date or something. So I kind of wonder if maybe that's something we should put on the table as well, having a meeting just to deal with the whole issue. I don't know how other people feel about it, but.
Parveen?
Just want to make sure as many parents as want to have a voice in this get a chance.
So we actually, besides posting it as we do everywhere, we did post on various places that we are talking about this, and we gave a more description of what was happening tonight. So we did more than we usually do for a board agenda item.
Now, my concern was really, did the label give people sufficient notice that they'd realize that that's what we were talking about? As opposed to just a general discussion, do people really realize that we might actually be talking about physically reopening the schools?
Yeah. I'm not, I can tell you that the posting that I was talking about was beyond what we posted on the agenda. We actually posted that it is a discussion about reopening on social media.
What I would say doesn't preclude that we're not going to be talking to families or, you know, as we continue, regardless of whether we decide to open now or follow this action item after discussion. You know, there will be continued conversations with different types of groups of families, different, you know. So I think that that is a yes and, in my eyes. It's, you know, we're talking to different family groups now. Tomorrow, we're talking to Latinx families. I think that there's other family groups that we can continue to talk to, which I think is already on your plan, Parveen. So I would say it's a yes and.
Yeah, I would think that. I think trustee Lee is talking about, you know, like a meeting like tonight, just before we start discussions in January, right? If that's what your decision is, whatever your decision is, there is nothing wrong with having like a public meeting, again, that is focused only on this item.
So given that and the motion, is there any further discussion? I'm going to give it to Shane for his preferential vote.
I would say, yeah, yes.
All those in favor of looking at reopening at the second meeting in January? Please say aye. First?
First meeting.
First meeting. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. I will move us on to item F, adopt resolution 322021, the Eden Area ROP 50th Anniversary. And Jo?
I would love to move this resolution.
Been moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Any further discussion? I'm going to give it back to Jo.
Just what I shared at a couple meetings prior, we're very proud of the Eden Area ROP of being one of the very first ROPs started in California and celebrating their 50th anniversary. Unfortunately, their gala that they had planned as celebration won't be happening because of COVID. But I think it's really wonderful that our board and governance team has stepped up to tell them, congratulations, we're proud of you. So thank you.
Thank you, Jo. And I really appreciate this, not only because of the celebration, but also, you know, we say college and career ready. And having the ROP really helps us with kids who may not intend to go to college. There are many amazing trades that they can join. You know, back in the old days, I was part of the IVEW. So I, you know, I appreciate the trades and the work that they do. They keep our lights on. They keep our water running. They keep our roads together. I mean, they keep our communities and cities together. So I really appreciate us recognizing them. Parveen?
Yeah, I second everything everyone has said. I want to say, I think a long time ago, people thought that if you go to ROP, you're only in this path. And many of the students that now go to ROP, especially the one we have here, I know that it's really a shining star, Eden Area ROP. Many of those kids, like you said, are getting jobs right out of high school and going to college. I also want to say that Linda Granger, the superintendent, has been absolutely amazing to work with. And she really leads a lot of the efforts in getting us funding for CTE. And she's done that the last few years, and she continues to do that. So I appreciate all of her work. And I'm really glad that we have this resolution on the agenda.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We will move on to item G, adopt resolution 332021, excuse the absence of trustee Theodore on October 2nd, 2020.
Move to adopt the resolution to excuse trustee Theodore's absence.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item H, adopt the minutes of the special board meeting held on October 2nd, 2020.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes of the special board meeting held on October 2nd, 2020.
Monica?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We will move on to board member comments and reports. And if I can remember where you sit in the boardroom normally, I'll try for this again. I forget every time. But I'm going to start with Shane. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us tonight?
Yeah, I have a few things. The ASB president, Alex Ikuma, and I have been working with our high school admin to improve and address student concern regarding the social and emotional learning Trojan Times. I've been advising and helping the senior officers prepare for our Spirit Week. And I've been coordinating with the California School Board Member Association to grow our organization by reaching out to other board members and working to get that vote on the California Board of Education.
Thank you, Shane. I think it's Dot that comes next. Dot?
I think you're right. I have not represented the board in any activities since our last board meeting.
Thank you, Dot. Jo?
The Community Alliance book, and the book conversation went really well. The folks have decided that they'd like to continue to meet. So Amy is sending out a list of books that could be on the agenda for the next session. And we're asking people to vote, and we'll select the most popular book. A very engaged group. And Teresa Branoff does a wonderful job as a facilitator. The ROP meeting, this time we learned about the education pathway. And it's astounding at the number of ways the ROP has managed to link education to different careers. It's not just preschool and not just teachers. They found a lot of different ways for students. And then we also heard about the IT pathway. And I have to say, I was just amazed at the number of jobs, careers available to students that are studying cybersecurity, Cisco Systems, and all of the things that those students can leave high school and go right out into the workforce, because they're one of the most in-demand careers around. And overall, the ROP classes are going very well. There was an interesting thing that came up that we have been asked to adjourn in honor of certain things as the year has gone on. And as president, usually the superintendent and I talk about it. But this last time, it occurred to us that we don't have any process for doing that, and we need to do that. And then I thought, you know, we really don't have a process in Castro Valley either. So it might be something worth having a conversation about, because if it gets very political, it's hard to say to someone, we won't adjourn in honor of that. So it would be good for us to talk about that. I want to recognize the adult school. They have two free flu shot clinics coming up. So I hope our community takes advantage of that. I'm sure a lot of us got to watch the high school choir on Friday night. It was an amazing performance. And astounding that the students had the verb to stand in front of their computer and sing us a song. I was really impressed. I made part of the Padres United Elementary Class. And then wearing my other hat, the League of Women Voters offered candidates' forms for all of our local physicians. But I want to tell people that I haven't talked to anyone that got their Alameda County Voter Information Guide, including me. So I want to encourage people to go to votersedge.org. It's a League of Women Voters site. It's nonpartisan. People put their own material up. It's vetted by the league, so it's not derogatory or something. But we have a tremendous 85% success rate right now with our local candidates. So if you didn't get your voter's guide, you can go to Voters Edge and have an opportunity to meet those folks with their own words. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Jo. Gary?
Well, I just want to say that I did receive my voter's guide today. So I have a feeling and hope that they are in the mail for everybody. I visited the adult school that Jo just mentioned in the last week or so and got to talk to a lot of the faculty that are up there. And, you know, that school always amazes me at how diverse their programs are, what a wide range of students they serve in the community, and what a great job they do in doing that. And like with ROP, our district has supported the adult school when many other districts let theirs go. I don't know what they were thinking when they let it go, but ours is really fantastic. And sort of to follow up on what Jo just said, I would like to point out two of the last Rotary presenters. And their talks are on the. Um, and their talks are on the castrovalleyrotary.org webpage. Um, a week ago, we had Tim Dupuis, who is the registrar of voters for Alameda County. And he gave an amazing talk. And whereas we hear a lot of problems around elections around the country, I think if you listen to Tim's talk, you will be amazed at how much effort Alameda County is putting in to making sure that everybody's vote gets counted. They are bending over backwards. It is incredible. And the one we had just this week was equally fascinating, if somewhat depressing. It was Nancy O'Malley, who talked about human trafficking and the amount of human, human trafficking in the United States, in California, in Alameda County. And she specifically pointed out Hayward, San Leandro, and Castro Valley. And she also pointed out that of those trafficked children, 90-some percent of them are Americans, US-born. Uh, and this is a serious problem. So she is really committed to that. It was a really excellent talk, as I say, is somewhat disturbing. But I think both those talks are well worth listening to and they are on castrovalleyrotary.org. So thanks a lot, that's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. Monica?
Actually, I have a few things this time. Um, I attended with Joe the Community Alliance Book Discussion, um, on How to Be an Anti-Racist, which was good. She's right, Teresa does a really marvelous job of facilitating the discussion. Most people can't do, um, nearly as well. It was very good. Um, I attended, as representative of the board, the Alameda County Office of Education meeting on hybrid learning last week, um, which was interesting. I mean, it seems like everybody's in the, pretty much the same position. Um, like I said earlier, everybody's still negotiating with their bargaining units about how to come back or when to come back. Like I said, Emeryville's the only one that has an MOU with their, uh, teachers. Um, I attended, or virtually attended, like Joe, the choir performance, which, you know, it's amazing. We're so fortunate, the qual, caliber of the music faculty we have at the high school. It just, you know, having had a son that was, um, a musician and participated for three years, it's, and then going to choir performances, it's just, our children are just so impressive. Um, I tried to go to the Alameda County Office of Education Town Hall the other night, um, but they got Zoom bombed. So it was a little sketchy for a while, but ultimately they were able to make it happen. And, um, a lot of the parents that were on asked them to do it on a more regular basis. So hopefully that will happen and they'll be able to figure out how to keep people from Zoom bombing them. Um, and, um, last night I attended Jensen Ranch PTA meeting and we had a similar discussion to what we had tonight. Um, Parveen presented parts of the, the presentation that she did tonight on reopening the schools. And I believe tomorrow night, the Alameda County Office of, or tomorrow afternoon, the Alameda County Office of Education has something with public health departments. Um, and I'm kind of spacing on exactly, but I know they have something else coming up for board members. And, um, uh, the superintendent said she's going to try and do something for superintendent, uh, for board members at least once a month to keep us posted on what's going on with the county and, um, public health. And that's it.
Joe, you had your hand raised?
I was just going to say it's at 2:00 tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Parveen, did you want to share anything more with us?
No, I think that, um, actually, I think, uh, trustee Lee and I have been to so many different things together, like PTA meetings. And I have to say, it's really wonderful because they're on Zoom. You have a lot more people attending and there's a lot more conversation. So that's, that's been, um, really, really positive, so.
Thank you, Parveen, and for myself. Um, I was with Parveen at the Proctor PTA. And, uh, I will say, Monica, you forgot, we both signed some diplomas, uh, over the last couple of days. So congrats to our graduates. Um, and Joe, um, no, Joe, I did want to ask you about your comment on potentially having a board policy. Maybe it's something we hear at, or create under a board policy and bring to the board. Is that something that you will be open to? As far as resolutions?
It's on adjourning meetings and how, how you select, how you're going to adjourn.
Would you mind if that's, that we look at that aboard policy and bring it to the board? Okay, great. Amy, keep me honest. Write that down, please. Um, and then I will say, Dot, you forgot. We did review, review a bunch of board policies for the board policy subcommittee meeting next week.
133 pages, so.
That was a small one.
153, I can't remember now, yeah.
Yeah. I, um, I, I just wanted to say, sometimes you, we do something and you always look at unintended consequences. Sometimes the consequences are really positive. So just having the, um, the stadium open. Um, I remember just about a couple of months ago, or maybe about a month ago, uh, I know, um, Monica had asked about that. So it's open. I see a lot more senior citizens actually using the field, using the track. And adult school is going to work on putting a program together for a couple of classes for them. Um, so that they can be safely walking around. So I've heard from our, uh, senior citizens that they're very appreciative.
That's great. Thank you for sharing, Parveen. Good news. We did it. Um, I also am going to be joining Monica for a listening session tomorrow with, uh, the Latino Hispanic families. And then, uh, next week, just want to put a shout out for the Castro Valley Education Foundation meeting. If you haven't heard of Castro Valley Education Foundation, they have scholarships for students, teachers, and help support, uh, the district with funding needs. So cvef.org, you can reach them online. Their board meetings are posted. Come join us, uh, support them. And you, if you have a, you know, you can get matched funding from your, if you work for a corporate entity. So with that, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, for your comments, uh, speaking up, sharing how you feel and what's going on. And I hope you all have a lovely, safe evening. And thank you again. Good night.